Good evening, everyone. Before we rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, I wanted to make you aware of a little bit of a change that's going to happen tonight. We have some daisies and brownies and cadet Girl Scouts who are working on a couple of badges, and those are citizenship and performance badges, and they are around the areas of public speaking and finding common ground. Hopefully, we will be a model for them this evening. So what I will do is, when I call the meeting to order, we'll say the prayer, but instead of then having the pledge of allegiance, the Girl Scouts are going to be doing a flag ceremony, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance with them. So just to let you know, it'll be a little bit different this evening. So with that, I will call this meeting to order. Please rise for the prayer, and eventually, the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance, that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Okay, girls. Please have a seat for the ceremony.
Everyone, please rise. We are going to fix for you a treat that's really grand, and make for you a recipe the greatest in the land. And first, we put a heaping cup of red for courage true. Then we add for loyalty, a dash of heavenly blue. For purity, we will sift in a layer of snowy white. We will sprinkle in a pinch of stars to make it come out right. We will stir and stir, and then you will see. Old Glory. This is our flag. May we always be loyal. Remember, as you look at the flag, which is the symbol of our nation. It is red because of human sacrifice, blue because of the true blue loyalty of its defenders, white to symbolize liberty, our land of the free. The stars are symbols of the white efforts and hope in the hearts of many people striving for a great nobler America. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girl Scouts, please join in the Girl Scout promise.
On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Color guard, retrieve your colors.
That was very cool. I don't know at that age if I could have done that. Thank them for being here. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal. Here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Here. Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
All members are present. We have several requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add the Finance Audit and Budget Committee report. That would be the number three, under reports of standing committees. We want to remove the second reading of the ordinance declaring that certain real properties be surplus. There is a change. Last meeting, you asked about transfers, and so that was taken, the word was taken out of the title and out of the body of the ordinance. So I think we need to remove this old one, and we will deal with a revised version. So that would be to remove the second reading of that ordinance, and then to add introductory readings of ordinances, the new ordinance that just says, the ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale by auction of sudden property, and declaring an emergency, and that is on your desk. So that would be number three under, I'm sorry, number two, under introductory readings of ordinances. We also have a resolution honoring the Girl Scouts, which I would like to add to the agenda and take care of that as soon as we adopt the minutes of the previous meeting. And then, under Communications, there is a letter from the Health Department regarding the credit card resolution, and we will read that communication prior to consideration of the ordinance adopting the city's credit card policy. Ms. Stevenson.
I move that we amend the agenda as you stated.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion?
No, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Han, did you not want a second?
No, I did not want to second that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
I was ahead of myself there, I'm sorry. On this property and the surplus, last week, or last meeting, when we discussed this, we did the first reading, and at that time, it was said that we can amend it later. Why is this now going back to an introductory reading and not going to be the second reading?
Because it's substantially changed, in my opinion. It's substantially changed. It took the word "transfer" out of both the body and the title. It was my suggestion to do that. Mr. Moore, comments?
Thank you, Madam President. If you, once you, basically, essentially, it amends what was in front of council before. If you amend an ordinance, you got to start over on the reading. You get to start with the first reading.
Well, wasn't it stated at the last meeting, we could go ahead and do the vote, and it could be amended later, and that's why we went ahead with the first reading.
It was, that was what was said. I didn't realize we needed to make it clear that if we amend it later, we have to start over on...
So we should have amended it last time to get this moving. Thank you.
Yes, we could have amended it at the last meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just, just a comment, there's no real need to have all three readings tonight. I have, I sent some comments and some questions to the auctioneer regarding, you know, as-is versus general warranty, some of the marketing questions that came up at the committee meeting, whether we, if we take a couple out, does that change the marketing budget? And there were a few just kind of technical things within the terms of the draft contract itself, have not heard back yet. So I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow. So if council wants to have another reading, wants just one reading or two readings, and think about this, that's fine. Or have all three readings on this, and then we can move forward when we get that far at a later time. If there's really not a, oh, we need to have all three readings today.
Mrs. Hanahan?
I wasn't suggesting we had all three readings today. I was just concerned, because I was under the impression we could have voted last week, or last meeting, and then for this meeting, you had wanted to look at the terminology then. You said, "Why don't we wait until I can figure it out?" So I figured we would go ahead with the second reading, and I was just confused on doing, because I thought we were going to go ahead with the second reading with the amended language in it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. It was out of an abundance of caution that I decided that we would start all over again, rather than have someone question whether we had the ability to do that. So when Mr. Brown called me today, it was my decision. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to amend the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We next have the minutes of the February 26, 2019 meeting. Those were distributed to you prior by email. Mr. Brayden?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept it. Minutes as read, as written.
As if read, yeah. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will next have the resolution honoring members of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. If it's up to you, girls, you can come up front if you want, or you can stay back there. Which would you prefer? Why don't you come up and be on camera?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have all three readings of this resolution, the first in its entirety, please.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution honoring members of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. Whereas the Girl Scouts of the United States of America teach strong values, respect, and service to God and country; and whereas, Girl Scouts earn badges to demonstrate mastery of their strong values and skills; and whereas, members of the following troops are attending the March 12, 2019, meeting of Norwood City Council to earn citizenship and performance badges for public speaking and finding common ground. Daisy Troop 44810, Daisy Troop 41642, Brownie Troop 42098, Junior Troop 42430, Cadet Troop 44523; and whereas, the service areas for these troops include St. Bernard, Roselong, Evanston, and Norwood. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that one, this resolution symbolizes the respect and admiration of Norwood City Council for the dedication, service, and citizenship of the Girl Scouts of America, from Daisy Troops 44810 and 41642, Brownie Troop 42098, Junior Troop 42430, and Cadet Troop 44523, and expresses the appreciation of council for the Girl Scouts' service to God, country, and the City of Norwood. Two, this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency based on the council's desire to honor the Girl Scouts without delay. Resolution honoring members of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. Resolution honoring members of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America.
Mr. Clark.
Move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clark.
I just want to thank you guys all for being here tonight, and for all of your service to our city, and all of the troop leaders for giving up your time for the girls. We really, really appreciate you guys being here, and thanks for all you do.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to thank you ladies for being here today, and I think you're doing an important service. I think we're looking at future leaders of not only this community and beyond. So thank you for being here once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to say thank you all for coming, and also that it's warming to see that there are still young people who are working on the basics that this country was built upon, service to God, country. Well, this service to Norwood wasn't what the country was built upon, however, we appreciate that part of it too. But it's good to see young folks such as yourselves that are willing to stand up and represent those three qualities. That's admirable, and you should be well-respected for that, as well as your troop leaders who are your guiding light. So thank you for being here, and keep up the good work.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to add my thanks, and encouragement as well. As someone who once took the Girl Scout pledge, I want to encourage you to keep growing in your civic opportunities. I hope that you'll all think about public service one day. We need more and more women to run for office. It's not too late to start coming to more meetings and learning what we do, and I hope that you'll think about that as you continue to grow in your leadership opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mrs. Hanahan?
I would just like to say thank you for coming tonight, and you should all be very, very proud of yourselves. You did a wonderful job, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Thompson.
I don't want to be the only one to be left out of saying thanks. Thank you all for coming. It was great to see what you did. It was a really interesting way to have the flag presented and to show your respect, and I just really thank you all a lot for coming and showing us. Thanks.
And how many folds were there on the flag, do you know? I think there's 13, because it represents the 13 colonies, so you guys folded it really cool. Yeah. So who are the daisies? Raise your hand.
Daisy.
So you're the little, okay, the daisies. And then who are the brownies? All right. And the junior troop? All right. And the cadets? And where are the leaders? Ah, thank you. Leaders, we have a copy of the resolution for you, for each of you. If you want to come up and get these, and we're just finishing up filling in all the dates. These have all been signed. You all have originals of the resolution. And we just want to thank you. Thank you for taking the time with these girls. Because if it weren't for you, we wouldn't have all these troops, and so we want to thank the leaders as well. You spend a lot of time... Does anybody have any Girl Scout cookies left? You might have a captive audience to sell. Thank you again. So the motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye. We'll move on to requests to address council on agenda items. We have one agenda item, but it's regarding the cleanup week, and so we will deal with that as we get to that resolution. The reports of standing committees, the first is housing, health, and public safety. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Council in the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Housing, Health, and Public Safety, to whom was referred short-term rentals, sale of properties, building department fees, limo and bird, scooters and bikes. Short-term residents, we had a resident stated he may have to sell his home due to a neighboring short-term rental and the problems occurring. A resident spoke on how she runs her short-term rental. Further discussion is needed. Sale of properties, discussion on city properties, and the committee recommends moving forward with the sale of these properties. Fees for the building department, discussion for raising building department fees, we will be looking into and researching this further. Bird and lime bikes, discussion about bird and lime bike contracts, further discussion is needed. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Maryland Hanahan Chairperson, John Brayden, and Joe Sankar.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. I think I read that the State of Ohio was looking at regulating scooters.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. It's your pleasure. Mr. Brayden?
I'd like to recommend the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the economic development and community engagement. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Economic Development and Community Engagement, to whom was referred committee goals, beg leave to submit the Welcome to Norwood. We discuss website developments, both the audit and the desire to draft requests for proposals from vendors who would design pages to meet our needs and expectations. Specifically, Mr. Bonzal, Mr. Thompson are going to collaborate on drafting a proposal within the requested allocation of $15,000. Council needs to consider the next version of the fiscal recovery plan by the end of March, which will be referred to in a moment. So it was proposed to have a joint review by, of the budget for the web design by both Finance Budget and Audit and this committee, to take place soon to ensure there's enough budget for the web updates. The proposal will be shared with the community engagement, community perception implementation teams, which both have goals related to communication and strengthening government relationships. I recommended the web feature coordination with other calendars, and that the committee consider whether hiring a communication person would be worthwhile to manage the website and other communication from the city. Additionally, welcome bags have generated some response from local businesses, so I'll continue to work with the quality of life executive and implementation teams to develop this process and experience. A letter from the mayor and a list of services still need to be developed for that. As it relates to small business in Norwood, since our last meeting as committee, we learned that the city did enter into a contract with Ray Hamilton, and the company is working through the next steps to implement the tax debatement that was approved by council in 2014. As a result of the challenges surrounding this and other CRA applications, we discussed making changes to the ordinance. I will work with the law department to draft changes and present to council for consideration. Potential changes include alignment to Ohio's Development Services Agency, identifying the "negotiating committee" when applications are submitted, and generally requesting the administration to update council on the status of actions that have been authorized. Last, the committee recognized having a better understanding of the qualifications of persons appointed or nominated to review councils as it relates to the CRA process would be helpful to leverage their experience or expertise in decision-making processes. Number three, neighborhood associations in Norwood. In February 2019, residents shared the community agreement that was created over this past year. It included community engagement goals for implementation, such as use of vacant space and promoting the arts. When residents are interested in utilizing any vacant space, Mr. Bonzal has offered to be a resource to address any barriers. The committee revisited the topic of murals and has made additional recommendations on the proposed zoning amendment, guidelines, and administration of an application process before the report out to council. Additionally, Mr. Bonzal and Mr. Thompson share, excuse me, that's a typo, they will remain engaged in other implementation areas of infrastructure and streets and parks, respectively. The other implementation goals for community engagement, the other goal, rather, for community engagement is communication and partnership with government. Therefore, as the RFP for the website is drafted, this committee will seek input from the implementation team. Also, block captains have been identified as an integral part of sharing about the community agreement and welcoming residents to Norwood. Mr. Brayden is going to work on securing more block captains in Ward 4. Next, we heard from Lindsay Matthews of Norwood Avenue. She is the co-chair of the Economic Development Implementation Team. Their goals include business development, supporting new and current efforts like the off-pike market, as well as developing or compiling how-to resources for small businesses. One idea the council and implementation team might partner to create is a seminar or workshop series. Lastly, business engagement is the other area where introduction to city administration and coordination with council, particularly this committee, is welcomed to enhance a positive narrative about doing business in Norwood. Temporary permits for seasonal markets and pop-up businesses, as well as market testing, were all identified as potential collaborations. Jason Provan's Floral Avenue spoke about the barriers to occupancy for small businesses based on current building code and required permits. One suggestion that the committee will explore is reduce fees for target areas of development when a permit is needed. Lastly, as it relates to quality of life in Norwood, the quality of life priorities created by Norwood stakeholders were made public on February 9 at the community agreement rollout. Congressman Brad Winstrup shared a keynote and praised the collaboration of residents who shared their personal stories of becoming more deeply engaged in their community. At this point in time, the following areas have defined goals, and any interested parties can support the implementation of these priorities for community engagement, housing, inclusion, economic development, infrastructure, and community perception. Copies of the agreement are available at City Hall and will be available at the next implementation meeting on Wednesday, April 3, from 6:30 to 8 p.m. at Zion UCC located at 2301 Indian Mount Avenue. The agreement is different from an official city plan, so the committee is interested in learning how other cities have leveraged agreements to develop a plan and use it as a guide for implementing and sustaining the quality of life in a municipality. Respectfully submitted, Leslie Stevenson Chairperson, James Bonzal, John Brayden, and Eric Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. It's your pleasure. Mr. Brayden?
I'd make a motion that the letter be received and filed, report.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the Finance Committee report. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Finance Budget and Audit, to whom was referred city finances, beg leave to submit the following report. We reviewed a letter from the auditor. We reviewed 2019 year-to-date city performance. We also reviewed a credit card ordinance and recommend approval. Respectfully submitted, James Bonzal, Chairperson Andrew Clark, John Brayden, Leslie Stevenson.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance authorizing... Let me find it. Next is an ordinance authorizing, let me find it. An ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to enter into a five-year contract with the Walter H. Drain Company for the annual updating of the Norwood codified ordinances. As I always do whenever any ordinances require the expenditure of money, I've checked with the financial auditors and they are fine with this because there are notations of this in the financial recovery plan that's being prepared, so you are free to move forward with this with their blessing. It's your pleasure. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. If I could question to the law director, is there a need to get this approved sooner rather than later?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. I think sooner they're working on pulling in the latest, so sooner would be better rather than later, and I would just ask that we just have it done, so we are just set to go, because I would say pulling out the, comparing this contract to the last one was, I think, 2004, that we actually, council actually passed a contract, and it was just a standard, that's the thing, this is what we do, it's a yearly thing, it's done every year, and this way we can make sure that if there is something that comes down from the state, at the very least online will be updated, we'll get in search for, that's a copy of the new code, even though it's in the old cover over here, and the new code is online, so, yeah, I would just, if we could, just pass it as quickly as possible, and we can get this into the regular rotation of what we do.
And I might note, much cheaper to update every year than it is to wait 10 years and pay the big money to update, so. Mr. Bonzal?
I would move that we have three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to enter into a five-year contract with the Walter H. Drain Company for the annual updating of the Norwood codified ordinances. Ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to enter into a five-year contract with the Walter H. Drain Company for the annual updating of the Norwood codified ordinances. Ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to enter into a five-year contract with the Walter H. Drain Company for the annual updating of the Norwood codified ordinances.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge there was a cost that was itemized to this. I think the estimate we got in a previous just conversation was that it would be about $5,000 to $7,000 each year, so I just wondered, Mr. Moore, can you speak to, the outlined cost here is what we should anticipate per year?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. $10,000 is a good, safe, rough number, just to be sure, and that's kind of the number we went with as far as being able to plan for this going forward, but it just, quite honestly, depends on how much the state does, it depends on how much council changes in the current revised code, because the current codified ordinances, it's a per-page cost.
Thank you.
So, it depends on how much gets changed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stevenson?
And just a follow-up to that, do we know yet, have we fully gotten an update online, or is this going to help support that? I know we got the bound copies, but I don't think we've had a date.
I believe it's all online now. It is, can you confirm that?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I thought it was. It's all online.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale by auction of such property and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hanahan?
May I move we have the first and second readings?
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mr. Clark?
Just wanted to ask a question to the law director through the chair, if I could. Just clarifying again, I know we've had conversations, but the reason it is specified that it will be for sale by auction is because that's what we are required to do by law. Is that correct?
Mr. Moore?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Hanahan?
I'm going to say what I plan to say about this, because I was, there was a conversation about these properties being given, possibly given to a potential CDC, private CDC in the city. And if you haven't heard about it yet, you will be hearing about it, you might be contacted. And so, I wanted to just jump on this first, since we're here, I thought it might be brought up tonight, and it still could. But I did have a few things to say about that, and I'd like to go ahead in case you're contacted and let you know my thought on this. The City of Norwood is in fiscal emergency and has been since 2016. Years ago, when we were in fiscal watch, various council members would say during council meetings that every penny counts, and I'm here today to say that every penny counts for our taxpayers, most especially when we're in fiscal emergency. These properties are assets that belong to the taxpayers, not to council members, not to the law director, not to our auditor and not to the administration. They belong to taxpayers. They have value, they have monetary value that is not ours to give away to any individual or group. And why is this? Because each one of us on council has a fiduciary duty and responsibility to take great care in disposing of assets that rightfully should be used to benefit all of our constituents. I will not vote for any measure that will essentially rob my constituents of a financial benefit that would come from selling these assets. The city is in fiscal emergency, which begs, which for me begs the question, why would any Norwood official thinks pack taxpayers should not receive the benefits that would derive from the sale of these properties by giving them away? Here's a short list of some of the potential benefits. The revenue might very well fund one or more of our police cars, might fund equipment for the fire department, might fix the hole in the back of this room where somebody could walk through or fall through the floor. And even more, taxpayers would like to see this revenue from these properties go toward fixing our streets. So, I say this because I just want everybody to be prepared, if you get calls, if you hear, I've already gotten some letters, and I am sure some of you, or many of you already have received a letter about this, at least one. And I just thought I just really needed to say this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Question, Mrs. Hanahan. Your committee has looked over all of these properties and reviewed it within the committee, correct?
Yes.
And are there any that you took off of a master list while in committee, or did all the properties that you looked at come through?
No, not all the properties. I think we didn't put two or three on. Mr. Sankar? I'm sorry. Mr. Sankar?
There were additional properties that the city had acquired that was deemed to hang on to for potential future developments, such as potential street widens or straightenings, things of that nature, where it would be better for the city to have those properties so they could, if they made a change to these things here, they wouldn't have to go through trying to acquire them. So, I believe there may have been three of the original list that was presented a year ago that were removed after discussions with the administration on potential projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if I'm alone, but I'm very surprised to hear some of the specific accusations or claims that there are people that are trying, council members essentially are trying to give away property to an entity. And so, I've never heard anything about this. It's not, I've never received a letter on this specific item. I have received a letter from a constituent that expressed her opinion about properties, about not selling properties, but never about anything about giving properties away to a CDC. So, I just want to make that super clear, that there's been no discussion, that I've been involved in, and that there's nothing I've ever heard about, about transferring properties to a CDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to ask if Mrs. Hanahan could be more specific in terms of where that came from?
Came from you, Leslie Stevenson, at a housing committee meeting. It came, it was a discussion before you and Keith Moore.
Correct. I'd like to speak to that. The discussion was, might it be more valuable to actually move forward goals that have already been established by taxpayers? If anyone in the room has read, there's copies right here, the community agreement, there are goals, and they're around housing, and there are goals, and they're about use of vacant property. And so, my suggestion was, why not, as a body, consider what residents, taxpayers have already spent months working on as a tool to decide what comes next? There was another person present who also worked on the goals specific to housing, who made it very clear, a lot of times, cities look to leverage the support of a CDC, because CDCs can have expertise in housing or the use of vacant properties, so that there's a strategic process in place to help move forward comprehensive goals. So, while I agree in fiscal emergency, much like anyone managing their household budget, every penny counts if you give it a purpose. I think we've heard reports from our finance budget and audit committee, as well as from our auditor, we are in a good direction. We have had some challenges with the opportunity to sell these properties, and it is newly available that we could disperse of them, but that does not mean we should forego a more strategic conversation around how they could be used. I think what is challenging to me is the possibility that we, as a body, could move so quickly that we actually maintain the status quo of seeing developers purchase property, not get appropriate permits, build properties, sell properties, and then we, as a council, hear from taxpayers again about insufficient compliance or oversight of newly-built buildings. So, I do think it's a worthwhile comment that Mrs. Hanahan has lifted up. Having a CDC in place does not mean we give to a private organization. There are lots of strategies that can be explored, and I personally think, given all the resident and taxpayer effort over the last month to come up with an agreement around housing in particular, it's worth us doing the same.
Mr. Brayden, did you have a comment? Your hand was next up.
Thank you, Madam President. My comment was, the last meeting, I brung up the wording of the ordinance, and it looks like that's been changed, so I just want to thank Mr. Moore for changing that, I'm assuming you did that, sir. So, this is something that we encumber expenses, these properties, we are maintaining and we are encumbering expenses on these properties, so us as a governing body has to weigh that versus the development that someone might want to see, or the, I haven't talked to anybody about giving these properties away to CDCs, so I haven't heard anything about that, so I think that that's probably not, at least we have to discuss that more at minimal. So, anyway, I just want to say thank you for the wording change, and it looks appropriate to me at this point, so thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, and like, as I said, I made the executive decision that I thought it was a substantial enough change that we did away with the other ordinance and did this new one.
Yeah, can I follow up on that, please? Thank you. Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. We had the first reading, and then we actually changed the ordinance, so that makes sense to me that we will have to get rid of the first one and then start over, so that makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you. Just a few points, understand what Ms. Stevens is saying. Currently, we don't have a CDC, so that would be a huge roadblock in what you're suggesting. I also want to point out, though, that I very much support what the Norwood Community Agreement says. It is the agreement of a, albeit a very active portion of our community, a very small portion of our community, and it's agreement that, while I agree with, hasn't been adopted or ratified in any way by the city.
Correct.
So, to suggest that we should, without serious consideration, use it as a roadmap for the decisions that we make with council, I'm fine to take their suggestions under advisement and to use it as a good suggestion, but to use it as a tool for which we should make decisions by, I don't think is the right time for that yet. It's a new, it's just been ratified, it's just been introduced, there's a lot of good things in it, and it is a plan, and it's a plan that's going to take time to work forward, and I think there's, as a community and as a city and as a council, it's going to take time for us to move into that. I could see in the future, whereas we have developed a CDC, and we have properties, that we might want to develop a way to work with that CDC in order to move those properties in a more efficient manner through that. But currently, we would have to hold on to these properties for an unamount of time until that kind of process developed. Mr. Moore, how long have we been holding on to these properties currently?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. The first one, I think we acquired in 2011. The bulk of these came from property tax foreclosures, and if nobody bids on them, then it can be transferred to the city. The original idea, and actually, if we had a CDC, here's the beauty, if you have a CDC, you can have it transferred and set it to the city's name, to the Norwood Community Development Corporation, or whatever that is, and all of the back taxes get wiped away, so it comes in free. So, that would be the way to do it, the proper way, instead of the way we got these, which is, oh, by the way, you are stuck with the taxes. That was kind of the idea at the time, is we would like to have, that we were, it was in the process of putting together, putting a CDC together to do this kind of thing, and so that would be fantastic. I would agree that at this point, yeah, the council can make, this is entirely in council's hands as to whether, do we want to wait and see if there's a development corporation that's formed, and at least for the houses, the four persons that have houses have them, and that the logic here would be, the city's going to donate these properties to the CDC, the CDC is then going to develop or sell them and make a profit, use the profit there to then reinvest in other, so that's the investment side of where the city gets to that. I don't know how realistic that is. If there was one, then yes, and there are some every so often, and we've just been passing the last few years, but there are, they come up every so often, where there's a tax foreclosure that nobody bids on, because the bank owes more than anybody else is willing to bid, and the bank doesn't want it, so that ends up going, that Norwood has an opportunity to acquire it. If there's a CDC, then yes, by all means, I would think that may be a fantastic way to go, because that way the city is not on the hook for back taxes, there's an organization in the city that's capable of doing something with these properties, and by getting those with no liens on them that have some value, that's a way for them to generate future revenue to move forward on future projects. So, I think that's a fan, so I just, if anybody out there, you know, is questioning whether at least the law department is, you know, their feelings on having a community development corporation, I'm all in favor for anybody that's willing to go through and put that together.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, yes, in regards to the ones that are on this list, on this particular ordinance, I believe we should move forward with the two readings and then have the third to follow up, at least to get the ball rolling. There are some details that need to be worked out with the contract and the auctioneer and all that, but I do think there are going to be other opportunities that are going to, what we will be faced with, with the city for additional properties down the road, and, because I know we had some additional opportunities that we passed on because of the fact we didn't need any anymore. need any, anymore to maintain. So, that, these, there will be additional ones that will be coming up, and we'll have additional opportunities, giving us ample time to put together, if indeed something does come about, to be able to have a plan for future properties where we don't have money invested in them as a city, where these, we do have some money invested in them. Like to just get rid of these, clean the slate, move forward with any future projects, and address those as they, as they come about. It may happen, it may not, as far as, you know, a CDC, or any of that type of group. But I do know, there are going to be additional properties that are going to be available, you know, whether we just refuse to look at them, bid on them, that's what the city's prerogative. Those will be there. What we do with them at that time depend upon what's in place, you know, we should address at that time. But I do feel, we just need to move forward, get these behind us, and look to the future on, future projects, and move forward with those. So...
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to go back to what Mr. Thompson said, and I am prepared here to say what I need to say here. First of all, I'd like to say, this has been in committee for four years. It was in Mr. Bonzel's committee first, then it was in Housing, Health, and Safety. Nothing has been rushed into, it's all been looked at. But I want to talk about concerns, since it's already been brought up here, and it does concern these, that these properties that I have about people, ways some of the people are going about trying to execute the Quality of Life Organization's Community Agreement. And this will go along with these properties, I assure you. To be clear, this is a group's, Community Agreement is not an agreement that the city of Norwood has entered into, which Eric has stated. Therefore, we have, no council member is in any way obligated legally or otherwise, legally, with the Quality of Life to bring their agreements, stated goals to fruition. I was stunned when a fellow councilperson told me that the city's 12 properties, valued at half a million dollars by the county auditor, would need to be sold in keeping with the Quality of Life's Community Agreement to move the city forward. This is incorrect, and it's preposterous, in my view. The Community Agreement is an agreement above, is an agreement among Norwood residents, as I was told, and reflects how they would like to see the city progress. I'm told there are approximately 50 to 100 Quality of Life members, an impressive number for a community group. I support most of their goals, and I support their desire to move this city forward. However, there are approximately 20,000 other residents in this city, and we, as council members, as a governing body, must represent all of them impartially. You know, I have another concern with this, and that's one of my constituents called me to report, that the Quality of Life Organization was taking, thanking our city planner on Facebook for all the work he had done for the agreement rollout at the Centos Center. The resident asked me, point blank, is this city paying our city planner to work on projects for an outside organization while we're in fiscal emergency? Good question, for which I did not have an answer. Then they stated they believed taxpayer money was used, and they and some of their neighbors were very concerned that the city planner's services were provided free to a special interest group. I dreaded looking into this, but at the same time, it's my job, and it's my responsibility. I strongly believe, we, as a council, must not give preferential treatment to any outside group. We are elected to make the best decisions we can for all of our residents. There must be a balance. As long as I have a seat on this council, I will continue to listen to all residents, including the Quality of Life, and any other organization that I want to see, that wants to see the city progress. But I won't be bullied for anyone's personal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I want to refer back to the Law Department statement as I regroup my faults here. He would be happy to transfer to a CDC, on board with that, I get it, but as of right now, there is not one. Correct?
That is correct.
Am I correct in saying that? And that's where it jumps on Mr., Mr. Thompson, I believe, said, stated that. So...
There is some initial work, but, to create one, but that has not...
So, there's not one now, so that can't be, that can't happen. So, the, the one thing that we did not bring up is the liability of these parcels. Some of these homes or structures are unopened, or open, I mean, or, or the doors are so rotted, they won't shut, and the floors are falling through. So, it's easy to, we have to make the decision whether or not to let these properties go or to hang on to them. Hanging on to them encovers us costs, and at this time, we are trying to be fiscally responsible. Now, I think that, the only thing that didn't come up is that our responsibility, if someone, a child, or a teenager, or an adult, has happened to be in there, falls through one of these floors, and then what type of expense would we encumber? So, no one brung that up, and I just wanted to bring that up, make sure that that gets out there. So, in our decisions to either pass this or not to pass this, we have to look at that as well, and what future cost will be incurred if a suit is brought forward, that somebody gets hurt in one of these places that are, as far as I'm concerned, I believe they're unsafe. So, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Just quickly, I just want to say that, if nothing else, I hope this starts a CDC conversation moving forward. I think we all like the idea, and think there would be great benefit for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first and second reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Please have the first and second reading.
Ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale by auction of such property and declaring an emergency. Ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale by auction of such property and declaring an emergency.
We will move on to introductory readings of resolutions, and the first one is a resolution expressing support for the Norwood Cleanup Week on Saturday, March 30th, through Sunday, April the 7th. And we have Ian Matthews, who wants to speak on that. Would you please come forward, sir? If you'll give us your name and address, then you'll have five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name's Ian Matthews, live at 2825 Norwood Avenue. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of the Norwood Community Agreement, but we have worked on this a long time. Some of this stuff, I'm hoping to talk to you guys tonight about, is a lot easier to talk about. Basically, I, I was a member of the, I am a member of the Infrastructure Committee for the Quality of Life team, and we worked pretty hard to come up with some, some pretty good goals. One of the things we talked about was revitalizing the cleanup. I believe it used to be a cleanup month. And so, we've talked about, let's start with the week. We talked about doing, kind of progressively large, smaller to larger projects. So, the first Saturday, we're talking about the dates of March 30th through April 7th. We're talking about, March 30th, we're going to do a Montgomery Road Street Sweep. We're going to meet at City Hall at 9:00 AM, and we're going to have supplies from Keep Cincinnati Beautiful Coffee. We're going to work, half the, half the group's going to go north, half the group's going to go south, and we're just going to try to clean the streets. You know, the next day, we're talking about having a neighborhood street sweep, where people just go out and walk your neighborhood, meet your neighbors, you know, pet a dog, pick up, pick up some garbage, you know, do what you can to make the streets pretty. During that rest of the week, it'd just be up to everybody else to just, you know, clean your gutters, spruce up your flower beds, sweep your driveways and sidewalks, donate some clothing, clean out your closet space, just the general spring cleaning, but to organize it in a ma, in a manner that's, gets everybody feeling connected and involved while they do it. Then Saturday, April 6th, we've been, we're planning a parks cleanup, or a very lofty goal would be to have people at every single one of Norwood's parks cleaning up. We're partnering with the Knot Hole baseball teams. Now, they're already going to have volunteers out those days at the Knot Hole fields, so we're going to add people to those and try to get the rest of the parks cleaned up. We're trying to get park captains to help clean up, at least have one or two people in charge. My wife, Lindsay, who Leslie brought up before, is going to be, or is a block captain, and so, we are going to be at the Waterworks Park. What's the easiest thing to say here? So, I'm hoping, we really just want, or asking for the city of Norwood to help us by basically putting it out there and telling everyone that they agree with this, they think this is a great idea. It's not a ratification of the entire Community Agreement, it's simply asking to let everyone as, know as best they can, that we want to clean up our streets, and we're asking for as many people as we can to help, and we believe that having the city at our backs will help us achieve this goal. For anyone listening at home, if you want to look it up on Facebook, Norwood Community Cleanup Week, you can email HR Copsy, H R C O P S E Y at gmail dot com to volunteer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
You're sitting down now. I want to say, I'm sorry if you felt uncomfortable having to speak after what went on, and it sounds like a wonderful project, and I think you'll do well. Thank you.
Mr. Sankar?
On the park cleanup, and is there a set time for that, or just?
Well, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, we had nine o'clock for the 30th, but I didn't all enforce...
Yeah, nine to one.
Nine to one, alright.
The park's cleaned up on Saturday 6th, Saturday the 6th.
Got it. Follow up?
Yes, Mr. Sankar?
And another point you made about cleaning in the neighborhood, just cleaning your, your gutters out in front of your house. It's almost that time of year when people start cutting grass. Believe it or not, grass will be starting to grow before long. And there's too many people, individuals and services, that tend to cut the grass, weed whack, and then they blow all the grass right out into the street. What happens is, if you don't clean that up, weeds begin to grow, they deteriorate your curbs and streets worse than they are now. And it's, they're really not supposed to be blowing that out into the, into the streets. But if we could get people to pay attention to that, and when they do cut it, sweep the dagon stuff up and throw it away, it would go a long way to keeping, you know, weeds from growing up and looking unsightly and that. But that would, you know, you hit the nail on the head there. So, and it's getting to be that time of year. So, hopefully, we can continue to push people to sweep up their trimmings.
Not only that, when it rains, then it washes down the street and clogs up all the drains, and then we have water buildup, and so, yeah. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mr. Braden?
So, I can't help it. I, I take care of several properties around here. I can't help but think that maybe you're talking about me. No, anyway. Anyway, I, I think that's a great thing, the park cleanup, the cleaning up. Who doesn't want a clean city? Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Is there anything specific that you need, or maybe that, is it, anything specific? Please come back...
Please come back up.
Is there anything specific that we can get you? Garbage bags? I mean, what, is there anything you're asking for?
Yeah, I got a little, I got a little rushed there. I got nervous on the podium. We do have some supplies available. I think we've, we've got at least a couple of little trash pickers that we're going to have available. Keep Norwood, I'm sorry, Keep Norwood Cool, sorry, Dana. Keep Cincinnati Beautiful is offering to donate some things like garbage bags and gloves, some of the very basic equipment. We are, a tenet over here on my little document here, it says, "Pick up supplies at Victory Park at 9:00 AM, and then head to the neighborhood parks." We are working on trying to get more people. The biggest thing we need is people. You know, I, I think we're going to have garbage bags, gloves, the very basic essentials. I know, you know, we're going to probably make it a day and bring the kids, and bring our pop-up canopy, and, you know, bring water and juice and stuff and all that. But I think the biggest thing we need is people, and we need organization. So, we're, we're starting to kind of create little events. We talked about making a Facebook event for every park, so that people could, you know, bring up specific things. We're also trying to come up with a list of exactly what each park needs. You know, I'm sure everything can use a bunch of mulch. I know Waterworks Park needs tons of mulch. You know, we're getting into this a little bit late, so, you know, we had this big grandiose ideas of, of getting Hebrew lumber to donate, you know, all kinds of wood to help rebuild bleachers and doral, or we wanted to do, try to get mulch either in kind, or, or be able to raise funds to buy mulch for a lot of the parks. Waterworks probably needs a foot of mulch on all their equipment. So, unfortunately, we're really close. So, we're just hoping to get some people out and clean up some garbage this first time, and we're hoping that eventually, we get, the vision we had was, if we have a spring cleanup every year, summertime, we do another cleanup before the Norwood Day Parade, up and down the streets again, maybe around your neighborhood. We talked about in the fall, maybe having another cleanup, if the Gem of the Highlands 5K keeps becoming a thing, to clean up, maybe people could walk that route and clean it up that weekend before or something. We talked about having a winter cleanup, maybe at the community center. So, we have a bigger vision for all this, and we're really just making sure it doesn't fall flat in its face the very first time we try it. So, people is our biggest, biggest requirement.
Well, I appreciate that. So, can I respond?
Certainly.
Thank you. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see any problem with it. I think when you ask for that, there's going to be people show up, because I think we have good people here in Norwood that's, that's going to join you in that. So, me, I want to be a little selfish, and I'm more concerned, well, not, I may have concern about, say, Hunter Park and Fenwick Park. So, is there plans for those two? And if, if not, maybe you can contact me afterwards, and we can, we can do some more organization towards those two parks.
That'd be great. We've been trying to find the best avenues for having people help us be captains. We would love to see people at every park, and we're hoping to get at least one park captain, which is really just the person that's going to grab the supplies and take them to the park and be the face of, you know, the, the effort for helping people show up, stand at the corner, you know, "Hey, come clean up your park." We're hoping to give out, we've been working with the block captains, because this is part of Quality of Life, and so, we, Hillary and I have a goal of trying to get flyers and maybe possibly yard signs or something, to try to get them to at least those block captains' meeting, which is the weekend, the 30th, to try to get them out into some yards around the neighborhoods, to try to advertise it a little bit. But we're, we're kind of struggling at the last minute to come up with the best way to get. But we'd love to have every park, and I'd love to talk to you later about...
Please do.
Contact me, I'm sure I'm amazing. I'm also, if I'm allowed, I've got flyers I'd love to leave over here at the table. I just printed 20 of them out of my house.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me be selfish there.
It's my pleasure. Mr. Thompson?
I would move that we have all three readings of the resolution.
May I make a suggestion first?
Sure may.
There's a typo, be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, and that following thing, it says that the Cleanup Week is from Saturday, March 30th, through Sunday, April 9th, and I think it should be April 7th. So, we probably need to amend it. Mr. Braden?
I'd like to make amend, a request to amend the resolution. As you stated, the typo was what, March 30th?
It should be March the 30th, 2019, through Sunday, April the 7th, in the last paragraph, instead of the 9th.
So, yes, I'd like to make that request to amend the resolution.
Mine says the 9th. Does yours say the 9th?
I'm on the resolution. I am so sorry.
Yeah, okay. I was going to say. Alright, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge the work of the committee, the implementation planning process, and both of the council members who put forth the resolution. I think this is an excellent example of honoring what our community is saying we value, and I'm really grateful that Mr. Matthews came and spoke to this, and I hope that you do see us tonight in this consideration, and in the future, put some support behind what residents are asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So, yeah, I just wanted to again thank the infrastructure team for all of the work that they've done on this. I've actually gotten to witness their work firsthand, just being a participant in that committee. It's been, you know, really great to work with them and to see the passion that many people have for the community. I would like to note that this wonderful plan, this wonderful project, is a part of the, their Community Agreement that... the, their community agreement that was rolled out. It's number three under infrastructure, empower people to, quote, "Polish the Gem of the Highlands through education, outreach, and community cleanup events." And I think that as people see, you know, many of the other things that are on here, and I do hope that this council does look further into this, to see what we might be willing to support or if we just might be willing to express a overall support of the plan, not that we have to do, not commit against any action, but it's an overall support of the, the work that they did. I think it would be a good thing. I just want to say that there's, like I said, many good things on here that I think many and many of us would agree with. And I just want to thank you all for the, the work that was put in. And I also want to note that I think it's any council member's prerogative, if they want to suggest that, even if we haven't taken any actions as a body, if they want to suggest that, hey, maybe we should follow the suggestions in here or kind of see, does it align with that? I think it's their prerogative to suggest it. And I think that it doesn't mean that we have to agree with it. It doesn't mean that we, you know, have to, you know, go with that. There's many things that I say at times that I'm sure that not everybody agrees with. But to vilify somebody for making the suggestion that maybe we should look at a plan that residents.
Alright, I'm going to stop you there. The motion on the floor is to amend. So our, our discussion should be around amending the date, not around the actual plan itself. So I'm just, we're going to come to common ground like the Girl Scouts did. Is there any other discussion on amending the date in the final, in the last paragraph? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution expressing support for the Norwood Cleanup Week, Saturday, March 30th through Sunday, April 7th, 2019, as amended. Resolution expressing support for the Norwood Cleanup Week, Saturday, March 30th through Sunday, April 7th, 2019, as amended. Resolution expressing support for the Norwood Cleanup Week, Saturday, March 30th through Sunday, April 7th, 2019, as amended.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I gladly move that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
It'll be on the topic. So I just want to thank Councilmember Thompson for his participation in this and his help. I know he's had, you know, contact between the, the groups and was able to help kind of facilitate a few things, so really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a resolution adopting the city's credit card policy and declaring an emergency. And I would, we are, we will read the letter from Dr. Perino prior to consideration.
Dear members of Finance Committee and Council, the Norwood City Health Department is requesting you consider and pass the proposed credit card policy slash resolution being presented by the Law Department and Auditor's Office. The Health Department has certain license and certi, certification fees which must be paid either with a credit card or by electronic check. To date, the city has no ability to make either of those types of payment. This topic was discussed in the meeting with Anna Mary and April during the preparation of the report on accounting methods last fall. In the past, a personal credit card was used to ensure these fees were paid and then the employee was reimbursed per the requisition slash purchase order procedure. Currently, the Health Department has pending payment due dates of March 31st, pharmacy license $443.50 plus $110 if late, and April 11th Medicaid $586 where the licenses slash certifications will expire. A pharmacy license renewal fee is also required by the Norwood Fire Department. We respectfully request you approve this policy in committee and request council to pass the resolution so the city may apply for a credit card immediately thereafter to avoid legal compliance issues or late fees. Sincerely, Frank Perino, M.D., interim Health Commissioner.
Mr. Sancker.
Recommend the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to the actual resolution. Again, I checked with the financial advisory, the folks from Columbus, and they wholeheartedly support this. Just as part of the Exhibit A, my question, it talks about the TDL licenses and those are called Terminal Distribution Licenses. So any entity that provides any kind of medication or drugs to people is required to get this licensure. Since the Health Department gives immunizations, they're required to have it and the Fire Department because of the drugs that they use in the paramedic units. Those are the, the TDL licenses that are required. In the past, people have used personal credit cards and the state auditors have said, "Ex nay, that is not something that should be going on." And it's their recommendation that we have one city credit card that would be held in the auditor's office for situations just like these. So I wanted to let you know that I did research it and they are wholeheartedly behind this resolution. Mr. Clark.
I move that we suspend the rolls and have all three readings of the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution adopting the city's credit card policy and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting the city's credit card policy and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting the city's credit card policy and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, I, you know, reading through the agreement there, I didn't see any notation in there as far as who gets to take advantage of any rewards for air miles or any of that type of stuff. Should somebody's name be stated in there like mine?
There is actually something in here about that. There is something in here about that. I swear I wore, I read it today.
Please find it.
Here, it requires that they send us a quarterly report. The auditor shall file an annual report with the city council which details all rewards received based on the city's use of any city credit card or purchasing card accounts. The auditor shall file said report at the first council meeting in January each year. So I don't know.
What card are we getting?
Um, I'm, what credit card are we getting? I don't know. I'm sure that it's wherever the bank, we bank at, what is our bank?
US Bank.
US Bank.
Please.
US.
US Bank? Yeah, so I'm sure it's through them. And my conversation with Ms. Corbin today, she was, it was, she was hopeful that once this passed, they would go down to the bank right away and try to get the process started. So they may not even give us rewards, but if there are, I'm sure they'll go back into the city's treasury if we get any kind of cash rewards. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports, so we do have three other requests to address council. The first is Amy Woffenberger. Would you please come forward, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Amy Woffenberger, 5406 Carthage Avenue. Tonight, I wanted to speak a little bit about MSD and the sewer fund. I, I didn't add this in my little speech, but I don't know if anyone knows what's going on on Globe Avenue, but MSD is digging big holes in people's yards and putting these like eight-foot water holding tanks in the ground. My aunt lives on Globe Avenue. She has this great big lid in her yard and now her neighbor has one right next door to it and she actually refers to it as Dolly Parton, these things sticking out of her yard. So I don't know if anyone's aware that this is going on down there. I know we hear a lot about flooding on Maple and in these areas, but Globe Avenue has been hugely affected by some of that. And my aunt herself had to build like a pedestal to actually build up her appliances because she has replaced her appliances so frequently. So having said that, I'll, I'll talk about, you know, what I actually have prepared, starting with the auditor's report. When I had reviewed the auditor's report, you know, it shows that there's a, about a $3.2 million surplus. It really kind of caught my interest. Then on February 19th, I attended a committee of the whole meeting and the surplus was discussed quite a bit in there. So there were a lot of things discussed in that meeting that struck me as well. It was explained in the meeting that it's a pass-through fund. So the way I understand that is we citizens are billed and then you take our money and it, it goes to MSD. I was kind of shocked to hear that this overage has been what I understood from the committee of the whole meeting, it's been here for about three years. And it was something that had, was building gradually every years prior. It just doesn't seem to be like a big deal to whoever's investigating this. As a citizen, to me, it's a huge deal. As a citizen that has had zero knowledge of how this process even worked till I researched it, I'm a little bit outraged, I have to say. You know, we sit here and we hear time and time again that, you know, no one knows how or why that money's there, how it happened, how it got there. Quite frankly, it's, it's a little embarrassing. You know, we're in fiscal emergency and there's $3.2 million unexplained in a sewer fund. Numerous possible explanations have been given, all of which sound like they should be pretty easy to figure out. Once again, there's nothing but what seems to be a blame game and a passing of the buck. It always seems to go back to administration. Council members, you know, in the meeting spoke about how they've asked for explanation of the overage for years with essentially no results back from administration. There was even a comment at one point that the financial supervisors either didn't have the time or didn't look into it deep enough. I wonder if these are the same financial supervisors that the city's going to have to pay for the last two years of the fiscal emergency. If indeed it is, it's pretty concerning to me that they don't have the time to look into an issue such as this. Just at the last council meeting, we had heard from, I, I don't want to address him wrong, but Fire Chief McCabe or firefighter McCabe regarding a salary, which coincidentally, again, you know, administration had been asked from council members in reference to the salary and pension, you know, and it was mentioned again in the council meeting that nobody ever heard anything back. I've looked a lot lately into the responsibilities of the fire chief and the fire department as a whole. These guys do a lot for our town. I'm just blown away. It's unbelievable, the things that they do that has been instrumental for our safety. They're worth every bit of what they earn and more. I also understand that they've worked well with the city during these financial struggles that we have been having.
I'm sorry, Ms. Woffenberger, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So, um, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Dana Bold. Again, if you'll give us your name and address and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Dana Bold, 3947 Elsmer. And what I have to talk about is probably something that could have been handled in the Parks and Streets Committee, but I feel like it can't wait. Excuse me, I just ran up the stairs. Recently, I went to a really great presentation of tree success stories at the Great Tree Summit, and I was reminded of a couple things that are, it's going to be old news to you. But way back when, Mayor Hockbine, a lot of people say, "Why do we have a tree board?" Well, Mayor Hockbine established, established the tree board with the intention of the long-term goal was to create Norwood as a, to qualify as a tree city. And they had someone who had shepherded the municipality through the process and she kind of went through some of the critical milestones. And, but the four characteristics are establishing a tree board, having an Arbor Day celebration, having a tree maintenance plan established by the city that is funded by $2 per capita. That's every single person per year. So why did this, why did this ring a bell with me here recently? Is quality of life people, they want trees. They want trees in Victory Park. Who doesn't? And while, you know, I have written grants and I enjoy doing that, don't get me wrong. But I feel strongly that if we're going to set aside the kind of money I've heard about for Victory Park, which is, it's $100,000, right? Whatever, it's a long-range plan, that, you know, $5,000 could be spent maybe this year on trees. One of the things that this administrator said was the most important shift that needs to take place is that trees are infrastructure. Everybody thinks of roads and sidewalks and parks and lights and highways, they think of all that is infrastructure and they don't realize trees are part of infrastructure. And as you build things, you need to make a place for them. Otherwise, the buildings will be right up on the sidewalk, right up on, and there will be no trees. So if you go online on the Arbor Day website and just type in "tree cities" locations, you'll just see, you know, Lebanon, I mean, they're all over the place. And one of the strategies they use is, people say, "Oh, my gosh, I'll never have $2 per capita set aside for trees." But the reality is, you're probably already spending something. It's happening through public works. Mr. Shepherd donated, you know, I'm sure those were donations in kind and there are numbers attached to those. So I, you know, we did some inquiries, this is no surprise to Mr., to Eric, sorry. And so I'm not throwing anybody under the bus here, but, you know, when people say, "Oh, well, we don't have a budget for that, for that park." Well, I think that's ridiculous because the time is now. I mean, nobody knows what is going to come to fruition with Victory Park and all of the, the gigantic wish list. But we do know that we need to plant trees now in advance of some of the trees we've got there coming down. got there coming down. So, just to report, you know, another outcome of this is that ODNR will actually come out and inspect trees for like Asian Longhorn Beetle and Emerald Dashborer, and the nice thing about that is, they have things in place, they want to replace those trees. So, you know, if we can get the ball rolling and those relationships cultivated, that would be a good thing. So, my ask is, please consider, in your budget, putting in some significant trees. And I'm talking about trees that a nurseryman comes out ball and burlap. It's not on, it's not on the Public Works back to get that done, and they're too big for volunteers. I mean, I think that would be really a game changer.
Thank you.
So, that is my ask. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time.
Can we ask a question?
Sir, if you will take questions.
I'll take a question.
Mr. Brady.
So, you mentioned two, you've mentioned the suggestion was $2 per capita.
That's if you're a Tree City USA. You want to be a Tree City, as designated by the Arbor Day Foundation.
So, will you explain a little more to the people that don't know what that might mean?
Maybe you know more about it, but usually, Tree City means you've got tree-lined streets, you've got parks, you've got a certain number of trees planted per person.
And when you say $2 per capita, that's $2 per person?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year, and that includes removal, maintenance, and planting.
And that is what you suggest we try to fund?
I'm just using that as an example because what they say is, anything less indicates neglect.
We certainly don't want to neglect our trees.
Well, I mean, I think we should set aside some, some of that funding, some of what we have for trees in Victory Park.
For instance, there are some, there are some communities who are Tree City USAs who, when a development comes in, says, "For every tree you take down, you're going to replace it with two or three trees," or whatever. So, that's part of their development plan. So, there's a plan in place to maintain or replace trees.
So, are we on that list? We're not on that list?
No. So, when this was first established, and Donna can tell you more of the details on that, they did push back, and they did get a lot of trees at, you know, Rookwood and at Walgreens and a number of places. But then we went into one of our fiscal slides, sorry, I know it's a technical term, but, and so, obviously, if the tree board doesn't have money to administer, it, you know, so...
Thank you.
It sounded like a broken record, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And last is Taylor Province. Again, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
All right. Hi there. My name is Taylor Province. I live at 4113 Floral Avenue. First, I just want to thank you so much for what you guys do for our city. It's a tough job, so I just want to, I don't think you're thanked enough. I just want to thank you very much, and thank you for letting me talk to you guys a little bit. I'm here on behalf of Off Pike Market. We are really excited about our 2019 season that's coming your way. Just to give you a little bit of backstory, Off Pike Market's first market was in November of 2017, which, that seems like so long ago. I just was saying, I just started writing the eight, and now I need to switch over to nine. So, it started in 2017, and then we became a nonprofit in April, that April 2018. Looking at my memory guide over there, okay. So, this season, we're growing, and we are going to start May 18th, and we're going to be on the third Saturday of every month through September. We are, third Saturdays off the Pike, because we're going to be right there off the Pike in the heart of our city, which I'm super excited about, on Mills Avenue, which is going to be right next to Victory Park, which is the heart of our city. And this was always just a dream of mine and a dream of Off Pike Market's board, to be in the heart of our city so that we are accessible to everybody from all different directions, and that's what we really, really want there. So, we had the pleasure of speaking at Norwood Quality of Life, and they just saw us as a potential to grow our economic development here in Norwood. You know, you kind of, Dana just kind of said, like, you never know where we may be, you know, what might, what might happen there at Victory Park. It's the heartbeat. Everyone has their eye on that, that spot. It's the heartbeat of our city. It's the center. So, we did have some renderings done of what Victory Park could potentially be. They are currently on display in my dining room. They're my artwork right now there. They were done by an architect named Mary Kate Gennis, and she did them for free for us just because she believed in our vision and believed in the heart that we had for the city here. So, I just want to give a shout out to her. She's not from Norwood, but she could be one of us. She's wonderful. So, we will be there May 18th. We are looking for merchants, we are looking for volunteers, we are looking for the community of Norwood to be there and to support us in this endeavor. Like I said, it'll be every Saturday, third Saturday of every month, May through September, and we're going to have food trucks. We are combined with the Norwood Farmers Market this year, which is amazing. So, we will have fresh produce, and we will have those great homemade jams, and then we'll also have our quality merchants selling their goods. I do have gifts. I have our button. Our 2019 slogan is "All Together Now," so you can find us hashtag "All Together Now" in Norwood. We're also hashtag "Third Saturdays Off the Pike," because we're actually right off the Pike. And I have pins for everybody as well. The joke in our house is that the pins made it to our Christmas card this year. My husband was wearing one. That shows true spirit there. So, I'll drop these off the table. Please, everyone, take one. I have tons in my basement and dining room, pins as well. So, we'd love to see you all there. We know we're a couple months early, but we want to get those dates out because we know life just gets busier as we go on. So, please, we have information about Off Pike Market is, we have our dates all put up there, we have pins and buttons, which maybe I'm partial, but I think they're kind of cool and cute, and we just look forward to seeing you guys there, and right there in the heart of our city, bringing it back to life, which we're really excited about for Victory Park. So, yeah, that's all I have for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Whoops, I'm screaming, I'm sorry. I've been busy this week. I was reviewing the capital improvements plan, and it's funny, they're up here talking about Victory Park, and I realized that, I looked at this, and we have $100,000 allocated to Victory Park for an overhaul. And I know that Adopt a Park is working on getting donations for a splash play pad, so that shouldn't be part of this. As I'm looking at things and going over them, you know, I'm looking at, we have money earmarked for Millcrest, for a gym floor, and backboards in the rec center, and then for Victory Park. Victory Park, $100,000, is a park that's already been renovated. It's already got benches, it's got a gazebo, it's got a play equipment. And the grand total for that area, we have earmarked $165,000. In contrast, the one and only park in South Norwood, which has been allocated, $10,000 for a new roof in the bathroom. South Norwood is continually growing like everywhere else with families and young children, and we only, and we have one park. Burrwood Park has a pool that was closed due to finances. The playground in the area has such major drainage issue, it limits access for our kids to even get to the play equipment. And I want you to think that the play equipment is over 50 years old. That play equipped, equipment was there when I was a kid. What does that tell you? That's the same play equipment I was on as a child. This park in South Norwood is virtually unusable. And I'm really asking, and when, when the capital improvement plan comes back out, or when it's being looked at, I would like to take that $100,000 out of Victory Park, which is already a very nice park, and put it into, I'd like to put it all into Burrwood, but I think I might have a few people saying, "Nope, I think we ought to share that. Our parks are deplorable." So, instead of putting $100,000 into Victory, I move that that all be taken out and be split among the other parks that are in dire need because kids in my area have no place to go for recreation. It's, like I said, the park is virtually unusable. And I hear, I haven't been to all of them lately. I hear, what, Hunter Park is bad, Fenwick maybe, but just to put it, put it all in a park that's already been done, when we have parks with, where kids can't play at all. So, I'm just asking that of you, if you would consider doing that so the kids have a place to go because they have no place to go right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a total of three items, so I'll look for your direction after I finish the first. The first is, our last council meeting, I think it was our last council meeting, I shared about an incident at the intersection of Carter and Sherman. I shared that I reached out to our Safety Service Director about reviving the lines. I know that's being taken care of as weather permits. Something else that I wrote to him about, and I wanted to ask council to consider specifically in light of our capital improvement plan, but also as a potential topic of discussion in the Streets Committee, is traffic calming techniques. We've had a lot of resident support for slower driving around our city overall, as we think about our roads and how to enhance not only engagement in our community, but what our walkability and just accessibility looks like. Traffic calming can be fairly cheap, it can be attractive and appealing, but it can also help reduce speeding in particular, and so I didn't want that specific suggestion to be hidden amidst the noted action of having the crosswalks painted. So, a question related to this unfinished business to Mr. Thompson through the chair is, is traffic calming a, are traffic calming techniques something your, your committee is willing to take on as part of planning purposes with the capital improvement plan?
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think we'd thought of that before, but I, it's a great idea. So, yeah, any, any information you can point me to, us to, would be great, but yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Thompson, you can probably get some free help from the Ohio Department of Transportation from the safe routes to school folks. Because there is, there are some traffic calming things in the, the street plan that was adopted. One of those, one of those that is come to fruition are the speed humps, but there are some other things that you can do as well. And another one that is traffic calming is in front of the middle school where the sidewalks have bumped out, and so there's just two lanes. That's a traffic calming technique as well. There are, I'll get you a copy of the travel plan. There are some things in there around the schools. Any other unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan?
It's, I'd like to just comment on what you, or ask you a question with what you said. In front of the schools where those cutouts are, there are some, I don't know what they are. They're standing up about this high. Do you know what they are?
The white things?
They're...
Or the cones?
It's where the flashing lights are going to go.
Oh, it's where, okay.
It's where, oh, you're talking about where the orange cones are?
That is for flashing, flashing, okay. I didn't know what was going to go there.
Those are for the overhead lights, and there was just, they're on back order, they weren't available, and so they should be finished. The guy from ODOT told me they should be finished by the end of March.
Well, when it snowed and you could hardly see them, I thought, "Somebody's going to drive right over those." Because you couldn't even see the curb. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I thought you were talking about the white sticks there in front of the middle school. Originally, we were supposed to have big, what were called bollards, that were supposed to prevent people from driving up the sidewalk, over the sidewalk and up to the middle school. But the, the school had requested that we do something that was not quite as concrete, so there are the white, those white sticks that prevent people. I thought that's what you meant.
Thank you. And it could have been, I don't know which is. All I know is they were sticking up.
Yep. And there's some by every school because all the pedestrian lights are on back order, so hopefully soon. You're welcome. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. So, there was some discussion earlier in today's meeting around CDCs, how they work, why they work, and so I'd like to suggest that we consider reaching out to some local resources. LISC is a great example, the Local Initiative Support Corporation, to come present to council and to members of the public, what is a CDC, how it works in relationship to the administration and council residents, maybe at a regular meeting or potentially as an agenda item in a committee of the whole meeting.
There's some work underway on a community development agreement, yes?
I'm aware of that. I don't know if all the members of the body are, or the public, so I do think we could all be well-served to understand what types there are and things like that. So, my specific request is for the members of the body to consider having a presentation at a regular council meeting, or for you, Madam President, to consider having an agenda item at a committee of the whole meeting where that type of presentation can take place.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. So, one of the items that we had worked on previously, committee of the whole meeting, is looking at the capital improvements plan. The feedback that was taken from that was given to the auditor and the mayor, and they are now working on crafting the city's, the financial recovery plan that council will consider and have the ability to amend at that time. The timeline for this is looking like next week, probably the 21st of March to Thursday would potentially be, either the 19th or the 21st would be a good day to set aside, to potentially schedule a committee of the whole meeting so that we're ready when the mayor's ready. We would have to pass the financial recovery plan by the end of, essentially 10 days after the 21st, so the sooner we can get it, the better, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I know that you're the chair of the committee of the whole meeting, but I think either the 19th or the 21st, but preferably the 21st would probably be a good day to set aside to at least mark on our calendars so we don't book it up any time.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. I think we need to check to make sure it'll be finished by then. Give that as a deadline where we can go over it.
If we're worried that they won't have it done by the 21st, then I think that we probably should just schedule it and try to put it for that point, because the thing is, we have to pass it by the 31st of March, so I don't want to have any less time than that for the full council to consider that.
What's everyone's availability on the 21st?
I'm available.
At 6:30? That's a Thursday?
The earlier the better on that day. Just...
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
You drive a long way. Can you be here by 6:00, 6:30?
If I'm in town.
Okay. Ms. Stevenson?
I would be available at 6:30 at the earliest.
Okay. So, let's tentatively call a committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, March the 21st at 6:30, and the purpose is to review capital improvement plan and the financial recovery plan.
Well, for, how do you say, for the mayor to present it to us?
Yes, for the, well, hopefully the mayor will be here to present that. I will double-check with him. All right. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? You all had a chance to go over the standing rules. Just remembered that, that I gave out, distributed to all at the last meeting. I didn't know if you had read the changes that were suggested, if those were appropriate. We could, if it was okay, we could go ahead and make a clean copy, and then perhaps you have to all, you all have to approve them before they're going to affect. Mrs. Hanahan?
I have to admit, I'm sorry. I've been really swamped, and I have not gone over them. And I'd like time to do that.
Okay, all right. I'll wait. Why don't you all let me know? Yes, Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just thank Ms. Hanahan for including Fenwick and Hunter Park into her statements tonight, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure that the people around me also appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sankar? Thank you.
On the standing rules, when were you thinking, like, the next regular meeting, or were you thinking and looking at that committee of whole meeting on the 12th? I mean, the 21st, sorry.
The committee of the whole meeting. It would be a committee of the whole meeting, that's what I called the committee of the whole meeting, at 6:30 to re, to get the presentation of the capital improvement plan and the financial recovery plan for us to discuss, and then have it on the agenda for the 26th.
But on these standing rules, were you looking to have that at the same meeting?
Not if you're not ready for it. We can wait, yes. We can wait, yes.
I was not at the last meeting, so is that something that could be emailed to me?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought they were on your desk. There was a written copy on your desk, but I'll be happy to email them to you.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Clark?
I just wanted to thank everybody. We lost my grandmother during the last meeting. I just want to thank every, all residents and fellow council members that reached out and sent cards and phone calls and emails and flowers and all that good stuff. So we just, on behalf of my family, we really appreciate that, all the prayers and everything.
Thank you. We did remember you last meeting, so...
Thank you.
Sympathies. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have several items again, so I'll look for your direction. This Saturday is a historical homes tour discussion at the Norwood Library Meeting Room from 12 to 2 p.m. If you're not familiar, the library is located at 4325 Montgomery Road. Anyone who's interested in helping to brainstorm ideas or plan for the event is encouraged to attend. Also, if you live near the floral area and want to have your first floor of your home highlighted on a historical home tour, you can contact Kristin Burtke. She's available via email at kristen.barlag@gmail.com. So the target area for the first tour they're hopeful to plan is the Floral Avenue area and the projected timeline is a fall tour. So maybe like October or November if you're considering participating or helping plan.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other new business? Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So block captains were mentioned a couple of times earlier today. I shared in the committee report that Mr. Braden is helping to recruit in Ward Four. Anyone intending to participate as a block captain or looking for more information, there will be an organizing meeting on March 30th from 12 to 2 p.m. at the Living Room. That is located at 2369 Norwood Avenue. If you're not sure about that role, but you'd like more information, you can contact Alicia Locke at l-i-s-h-a-l-o-c-h at gmail.com.
Thank you. Another? No? Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, this is my last one. So for persons who are interested in being a part of the implementation plan, implementation team, excuse me, that are creating more actions around the agreement that's been made by residents and stakeholders, that next meeting is Wednesday, April 3rd. And just a reminder, that's 6:30 to 8:00 at Zion UCC, which is located at 2301 Indian Mound Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there any other new business? We will move on to communications and the first is from Kelly Brown regarding February financial records.
Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the February monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on March 4th. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? This matter did come up in the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. They asked if these were on our agenda or if each member of council received them. I verified that they were available to each member of council and it was suggested that they be emailed to every member of council. So I appreciate Ms. Brown's willingness to do that so that everybody gets those. Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. And I mean, just acknowledge, I think that every council member should have been receiving these via email since January of the previous year, so January 2018. And if not, I guess they have it now. But I definitely tried to make sure that each of you all were included on that and had access to those reports at all times. So I appreciate the Auditor's Office for being willing to send this so that we can all acknowledge that we did give them.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Is there any other discussion?
The law department gets them too.
You do too? Okay, that's good to know. The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding Mayor's Court fines for February 2019.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of February 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Finally, there's a letter from Mayor Williams regarding appointment of representatives to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Dear Madam President and members of council, the Hamilton County Development Center is charged with the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council, Turk, to monitor the compliance of active enterprise zone agreements and community reinvestment area agreements. Participating communities must formally designate two representatives to serve on the Hamilton County Council. Turk members must be approved by council and they must be residents of the Norwood community. Please be advised that I am designating John Hanahan and Andy Conlin as the city's representatives and I am requesting that you approve these two individuals to represent our municipality. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sankar?
Recommend that the letter be received and filed and the appointments be approved.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, thank you. So at the last two Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meetings, we've had notice from the law department about the need to do some nominations from council and just a reference to the appointments that come through the mayor. I've requested the mayor talk with me and our committee more about our CRA process, which is what leverages this Tax Incentive Review Council. I haven't heard a chance to hear from him, but one of the, one of the recommendations that the committee has discussed is when appointments are made, we become aware of the credentials, the experience, the expertise of the persons being asked to serve in these capacities. I know it's a very finite task. This is not an ongoing role, is what I learned from the law department when this particular group first came up to the committee. I personally would like to see these appointments come with a better understanding of who's being appointed. That's a request that I've made a couple of times now and unfortunately was not able to contact, was not able to communicate with the mayor ahead of this appointment request being made. So because I've already gone on record saying I'd like to see that, I'm not going to vote for this. I understand that we as a city are obligated to have this in place, but I just want to use my vote to underscore, I think we need to add a little bit more to the process. So we know who's supporting us as we operate off of the ordinance that governs the process and they can know us too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and approve the appointments. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
My vote of six to one, the motion carries. We have no ab, numbers. Mr. Braden?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.